Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see this is being well attended tonight. We're here for the purpose of discussing the annual town meeting warrant that you have received. And it is the purpose tonight to answer any questions that you may have relative to Articles 3 through number 28. That being said, we'll open it up for questions. I'm going to ask that if you have a question, that you go up to the podium. So the viewing audience will have an opportunity to hear your question as well. So with that, I'm going to open it up to you. If you have any questions, please raise your hand so you can be recognized. Your questions. Joe?
My question is to the Highway Department. Okay, we've got $100,000 for electrical upgrade and two sewer increases. Not challenging those, okay? But the numbers, are those from proposals? Or are those just guesses or bids?
So let me just get to the articles in question.
Electrical upgrade was $100,000.
Right, so that's an estimate. We don't have any codes at this point. That was the result of a safety inspection by our insurance company.
Did it come from an electrical contractor?
No, it did not. So there is an electrical component to it, and there is also safety improvements.
Okay, I'm not questioning, I was just questioning the number.
No, but it's, there's a list of things that we need to address.
So it's not a qualified number?
No.
Okay.
And then the sewer. Was that, sorry, Nick, was the sewer superintendent?
Yeah, there were a couple, same question, okay? Are those qualified numbers or those just?
Do you want to say? Schwartz and the Sewer Superintendent. So there's two articles for the Sewer Department. So we have Article 24, $150,000 for the engineering design services for a portion of 16-inch ducted iron force main. That's based off of sort of a budgetary estimate. We did speak to a number of engineers for that. We haven't gotten any proposals yet. We haven't had the opportunity to do requests for proposals. So we're still in the process of doing that. But that is based off of the estimated construction cost for that project. The intent is to do a design on the full project and then see if we have to break it up into phases once we go through that design process. So that is basically, it's basically a number that's backed off of a construction estimate that we got. Sort of a conceptual estimate from an engineer.
My concern is those three items are big dollars.
Yep.
And if you go with $100,000 for the electrical, which happens to be one of my disciplines, the concern, okay, that comes time to go out to the bid, okay? And all our bids come back at 125, 150, 200, okay? So I just would feel more comfortable if we had some science behind these numbers.
Sure, so we're more looking at, you know, not a total overhaul for the garage part of it. But we're looking at replacing the entire panel, the fuse panel, and in addition to the interior part of the garage, replacing.
Not questioning that at all.
Sorry. So we added that portion if we need to do some of the safety improvements in-house. We, you know, we're always looking to save money and, you know, bring that in-house. So we're hoping that we can address all, you know, most or if not all of the concerns that were raised by the insurance company.
Thank you.
In addition to that, I also wanted to go back to, you know, I know that the two, the Highway Garage and the Sewer, they are large numbers. Our sewer infrastructure, infrastructure is always going to be, you know, a large number, but it's going to be coming from retained earnings. So it's not going to be, you know.
I understand that Sewer is enterprise, okay? But the $100,000 for the electrical.
That's right.
It's not.
No, that's the Highway Division, not the Sewer.
I'm just not comfortable with the number, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone else have a question? If you do, if you could make reference to the article number in your warrant book, it will make it a little easier for the sponsor to track.
Sarah Libby, Precinct 5. I have questions on a few articles. First, Article 19, just, it's $25,000 for training, support, and services by the town assessor. Just curious what the training is for and what in, et cetera.
Our assessor is making his way up to the mic. Seth Woolard, he can answer that question for you.
Seth Woolard, Assessing Division. The $25,000 is for training and support from our vendors, RRC, which does personal property. They originally wanted to do a higher number of personal property accounts. We were able to talk them down. Otherwise, the warrant would have been for $35,000. We were able to talk them down, $10,000. And Vision, which is our camera system, which does all the valuations for commercial, industrial, and residential properties. Their costs have gone up, their support, their guidance, their training, their insight into the market, the liquidity of the market, and the real estate values. So that's what that is for.
My next question was for Article 20, a similar question. $61,000 for software costs. Just curious what software and what does it do?
Caleb Modi from the Building Department. The software costs are pretty much, it's going to move all the building permits online. We have a current vendor. We're switching to a new vendor. It's also going to move the Clerk's Department to all online services, so.
One more. This is regarding Article 27, the changes in definitions for signs. And I'm just curious what the motivation behind these definitions? Just looking for a little bit more explanation, especially with the changing of the definition of temporary sign and then striking 7.3, 0.2, or 0.1, 0.2.
Adam, Adam, Town Planner. So the zoning bylaw review committee has been looking at the sign portion of the bylaw for about a year. The main intent of the changes are to bring clarity to the definitions and to address some of the safety issues that may arise with flashing lights near an intersection. For the definitions, there is the concern, for example, mechanically driven and inflatable signs, waving signs, stuff like that along a roadway might be distracting, might cause an accident. So trying to address safety.
Okay. Does the changing of the definition of temporary sign include things like, does it change yard sale signs, things like that?
No.
No, okay. And then the striking of 7.3, 1.2, does that completely remove the require for a permit? Or is that just the displaying of the permit?
It's just that one portion. Instead of having a number on the sign, we can just track the signs in-house. It doesn't change.
Okay.
Required before permitting.
Thank you.
Danny?
It says it was a small number on it.
Danny Ladges, Precinct 4. I would love to hear more about the wetlands. I believe it's, was it 27, no, 28, 27? Because I was kind of reading it, and I got lost after like the first couple pages because there's so many, 4. this, and 4. that, and 4. floodplains.
This is the floodplain bylaw. I was contacted by FEMA and DCR, Department of Conservation Recreation with the state. They are requiring these changes. All the changes that are proposed have come directly from FEMA and DCR. I'll read you the letter I received from them. If these changes are not adopted, if these changes aren't passed, communities that fail to enact necessary floodplain management regulations will be suspended from participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So if we don't make these changes, a resident cannot get flood insurance.
So what areas of the town are going to be affected by these?
The areas that were mapped were primarily the western end of town along the Wellington Brook floodway. I have copies of all the maps in the office. If you'd like to have, look at copies.
So nothing on Sword Street, Rockland Road, over to Oxford Street?
My understanding is FEMA is working on mapping those now. They're not part of this change. Those will be coming in the future.
How long will that take?
No idea. It's up to the feds to do. It's their project, not mine.
Okay, thank you.
Doreen?
So I have a follow-up question on Article 20 for the software. I know you had said that you're looking to go all online for applications and stuff. Will residents, businesses, still have the opportunity to have assistance and come in here and apply? I know what I've learned through COVID is people being stuck at home and everything was done online. And not everyone has that access. Not everyone has the same access. And they don't have the ability to, whether it's go to the library, go to, you know, a senior center, not everyone has access to a computer. So I just want to be sure that we're thinking about, when we're moving to doing everything online, that we're thinking about the people who don't have access. So that's, I guess, not my question, my comment on.
Doreen, like any software application, the applicant would have the opportunity to either do it online or come visit us here at Town Hall.
Okay.
We welcome either one. We're not, we're just offering it as a tool where people can do it remotely, they can do it off-hours. It gives it a little more flexibility.
Okay, I've just seen, you know, over the last couple of years, people, you know, whether it's applying for, you know, trying to get an appointment or have a hearing, everything's done online. And if you don't have an email address, then you can't get to the next step. And a lot of people don't have that. So I just, anyway, that's one of my concerns. I just wanted to ask. So my next question is on page six, which is the pie chart. So just a, you know, a couple of questions, a little conversation. So I just, you know, I like to review this. The 1.46% public services, that's library, senior center, and is it veteran services?
It would be library, senior center, and cable.
Cable, okay.
And veterans.
Okay, so that's what that public service is, that 1.46% of the budget? And general government, that's the overall, I like to refer to it as Town Hall. We're operating on 5.65% of the budget?
That is correct.
Okay. And employee benefits. Is that up a little bit from last year? And is there concern that health insurance costs are rising?
So our health insurance costs, let me just turn to 910. I can tell you, our health insurance costs are up just under 5%.
Okay.
The actual increase was more in the vicinity of 8 to 9, but we're using the equity that we have in our health trust, which is about $11 million, is a way to minimize the annual increase, not only for the employees, but for the employer as well. Because we do a 75% match. Our retirement assessment is up about 11%. That's quite an increase. But that has been about the four-year average, ranging from 10 to 11%. Those costs continue to grow.
That's our OPEB?
No, but OPEB is a.
Where are we with that?
So our OPEB liability currently stands at about $57 million. We have about $7 million in our OPEB trust. We're about 12% in that vicinity of a funding ratio. I can tell you, we're far ahead of other communities as it relates to our OPEB liability. And that's going to fluctuate based upon a number of conditions. And there's an actuarial that's done every two years to gauge our liability. As our health insurance goes up and our OPEB is growing as well, at some point, we're going to be able to use a portion of our OPEB to pay our health insurance costs down the road. And that's what it's there for, to offset the rising cost of healthcare costs in the future.
So I have two more questions. So I see the superintendentness here. The education budget, 39.47%. And then it says, does not include indirect costs. So those employee benefits, would it be safe to say that those employee benefits are about half the municipal side and half the?
So I can tell you, the health insurance cost for schools, our total health insurance cost, the percentage of school-related expenditures is about 68%. Now, we measure that based upon actual payroll the first week of September. So that determines our level of indirect costs that we pass through the school department based upon that metric. So if you take school department direct costs and school department indirect costs, which includes debt and interest.
Yep.
It's been running about 62% of the total budget.
Okay. And I'll just say it because you guys are here. You know, I mean, public safety, 12.66%, well deserved. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doreen.
Thanks.
I'm afraid we're going to have to blame the fire, guys.
Any other questions? Just to give you a recap, and I'm going to present this a week from tonight. The level of taxation to fund the FY '24 budget, out of Prop 2.5, and if you turn to page, I don't know if you have your warrant book. If you turn to page seven, and if you look at up top, the tax levy portion, what we're allowed to add to the levy under 2024 is the second line down. It says 2.5% increase, $1,317,000. That's what we're allowed to add. The level of taxation that we're using out of that $1.317 million is $258,000. So we would be adding about $1 million to our excess levy, which means we're not taxing close to the max whatsoever. We're taxing at a rate of 19.63% out of 100% of 2.5, which is just under 1/2 of a percent out of 2.5. So once again, we're doing what we can to minimize our level of taxation to the residents and to the businesses of our community. And that's something we're proud of. And we will display a chart like we always do at our annual town meeting, the total savings to our taxpayers over the last 11 years. Now, that being said, that uses the governor's estimated revenue that was released in late March. The House just released their numbers, which we received last week, which is basically a mirror image of the governor. So we feel pretty confident that the governor's numbers will hold. It may change one way or another, but not significantly. That's good news. Certainly, the Senate has to release their numbers, and that has to go to Conference Committee for a final vote. But based upon that, we feel pretty confident with the numbers that we're presenting at the annual town meeting. Doreen?
I have another question once I've looked at my book. How much do we get in lottery receipts? How much do we count on it? And, well, first of all, that's my first question.
Let me just see if I have my cherry sheet here.
So my, so.
Unrestricted government local aid is just over $2 million. Which lottery is a part of that?
Yeah, okay. Because I'm sure everybody's hearing, you know, there's a concern with the lottery numbers dropping with the new online gambling. So I just wanted to know what we're doing in being proactive that that may drop and we may not have those dollars.
So what, and that's a great point. On the other side, though, that additional billion dollars that's raised through the estate tax, I don't know how much of that is being used in the FY '24 budget. But certainly, there could be some room for growth on that aspect in future years. I don't know how much of that billion they've built into the FY '24 budget. But if there is a corresponding reduction in lottery, hopefully, that estate tax revenue will offset that, just to keep us dead even, if that's possible.
Okay, since we're here about town meeting, I'm going to ask one more question, a follow-up to Danny's. That article on the stormwater, that very long article, is there going to be a town meeting? Just, I always feel badly that those articles are at the end of the warrant. People don't care about them. Is there going to be a quick summary of the importance in talking about FEMA contacting you and letting town meeting members just know the importance of this? Because when, we've seen town meeting members, you know, just look at an article like that and not want to deal with it because it's too long, it's too late. And if it's important, we need to make sure we get that message across so that we're not revisiting a warrant article that is very important to the town.
Thank you. I can tell you, we met with the moderator today to go over our annual prep for the town meeting. That topic did come up, and there may be an effort to move those two warrant articles upfront so we can address them without the risk of losing people during the evening.
Okay, hopefully, that's it. I might not be back.
Danny Ladges, Precinct 4. Page 43. The last two lines. Can we kind of clarify a couple of things here? On those last two lines, Highway Superintendent, you know, Seth. Can we put some names with these?
So the last two lines, Highway Superintendent, Assistant DPW Director.
Correct.
Because they serve multiple roles. They.
Okay, so.
They have a difference.
Okay, so the names with the salaries?
So Highway Superintendent is Ken Fairbanks.
Highway Superintendent?
And our Assistant DPW Director is also our Sewer Superintendent, which is Nick Schwartz.
Okay. And the rest, the 2,078, 3,000? Just kind of confused, there's so many different prices here, but.
Right, so if you look at this, Highway Superintendent is $96,960. And the rest of the numbers are a sum of, they sum up to that $96,000.
Okay.
So just to clarify where that, the total sum, the total wages are coming from.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Russell? Russell Talisman, Precinct 2. I just need, it's not a really big thing, but on Article 7, it's about when the town takes over from tax liens, homes, and it goes up to public or private bid. My confusion is, what is Auburn doing with the properties now? And how far in the rears does a property have to become before the town can take it over?
So I can tell you, most recently, we, annually, we go after our top 30 delinquent. And we send out letters from the attorney in an effort to collect what's in arrears. And that's been very successful. I can tell you, during COVID, we didn't do anything because we thought that was a hardship on a lot of individuals, a lot of families. And we're allowing time to pass so people can get back on their feet. But we target the top 30. If there is a, if they're not willing to enter into an agreement with the town, then we may consider tax foreclosure proceedings. And that's something we do not like to do. We try to give the taxpayer an opportunity to make whole, whether it's through an agreement over a period of years. We try to allow some flexibility to allow that to happen. But that's something we target on an annual basis, Russell.
See, my concern being is for maybe 10 to 12 years, immediate next door has been a vacant house. It's actually a hazard. I think it's 173 Oxford Street. I live at 175. And I'm just wondering how much longer this has to go. Plus, the question is, you're asking for the sealed bid in the open bid or the auction. This money is, how do you handle that auction now?
So I can tell you that the last auction we had was probably eight years ago for two homes here. We have a, it's put out in a bid by an auctioneer, and people bid on the house. That's paid, it goes into what we call a sale of real estate account after the balance has been paid off. But that's how that works. So this authorizes the treasurer to put those homes out for auction if they are foreclosed on. Once they're foreclosed, they're the property of the town. That's when we auction them off.
All right, well, thank you.
And Russell, if you could just leave the house number of the one you are concerned with? I don't know the status of that. Certainly, the bank or someone may have been paying the taxes. It may be vacant. It may not apply in this case, I just don't know.
I know, I think that's kind of, sort of what it is. Because it's been vacant for about 12 years. It's been thoroughly robbed of all its wires, its coppers, there's animals, there's rats, there's... And that's where I'm getting concerned about what it takes for the town to acquire a property. Thank you.
I think this one would go to Doreen. Article 21, the Regional Housing Coordinator. So can you talk a little bit about what communities would be involved with that? What the role of that regional coordinator would be? And where the benefits lie? Excuse me, and under which town it generally falls under? Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. So the article regarding this actually ties in with an effort by the town to focus on a lot of the needs that are happening right now in the community. So as you may know, affordable housing is something that has been looked at by the state in trying to just get more housing for people everywhere. It is something that has been important to Auburn for several years. And, you know, we have two projects in town that were completed within the past year that took two existing school buildings and turned them into housing for seniors. This is a focus that has been important to the town for a while. And in an effort to continue in that fashion, we had been contacted by CMRPC, Central Mass Planning, Regional Planning Council. Hopefully, I got that right. And there is a grant that became available earlier this year that they let us know about. They put it out to several Central Mass communities to see what the interest was. There were, I believe, about five towns that had responded in the affirmative, wanting to know more about it. We had several meetings. The, several of us here had conversations with other towns, sister towns, and kind of talked about what everybody's need was. There's a common theme there that we're looking to see how we can make it easier to, you know, survey the needs of the town and get some help for those questions. There's five towns that are involved, Auburn being one of them, Mendon, Shoesbury, Grafton, Berlin. I think I have all of them. And those towns are going to basically share a regional person that will assist each one of the towns in their quest for trying to figure out what housing options may be available to the town. That regional position is really kind of a nice way for us to enter into this area because they offered like a tiered system. So this amount that is in the warrant article, I think it's $17,000 and change. That amount is, I'm sorry, it's $16,000. That amount is for the minimal amount of hours that the town could ask for. And that will allow a person to come and give us time or come to meetings and help educate the public on what options are out there. We feel that this is a good use of the money. And we are asking, we are asking for this in anticipation of the following year. The good thing about the grant that CMRPC presented to us is the very first year is free. So the first year will kind of get everybody acclimated to what services they are going to provide. It'll kind of give all the towns a chance to be able to identify their specific needs, what they have going on in town. Are there options that we can look at in town? Any areas that may be available for housing? And that will allow us for the first year to not have any expense. This funding is really to try to help us keep this position going. And we feel that it's very important. If I can just go off-topic, but it's in a similar lane. We actually just put out recently a survey to the town on housing needs. This survey was created by, with CMRPC and the town officials, planning, town manager, our economic development coordinator. We all kind of went through and with the guidance of CMRPC that does this all the time, came up with a housing survey. So this survey was rolled out about two weeks ago. It's online, we do have paper copies here that are here in the town hall. We have them at the library and we're actually going to bring them to town meeting as well to try to get interest from the public to fill out these surveys to help us when we work with the regional housing coordinator.
Thanks. So do we know where we're at with our affordable housing percentage?
I don't remember the exact amount, it's around 5%.
And we're supposed to be at 10%?
Correct.
Okay, so this, so this position will help identify areas, you know, instead of just putting up these huge apartment complexes. There are so many other, you know, options available for affordable housing units where you can incentivize a builder if they're putting in six Colonials, you know. One of them can be an affordable unit and they get the tax credit. So, so thanks, I fully support this and thanks for the info.
Doreen, one other comment. That 5% that currently exists now may come down a little bit when the new census numbers are released.
Wow.
So we're expecting a downward movement, not much, but we believe that census growth is going to flatten that out a little bit.
Because, I mean, there are communities, you know, in our area, in Central Mass, that have hit their number. So now developers are going to be looking to come to Auburn. And I think that we need to be proactive and have a plan. So, so yes, fully support this, thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. And one other thing that this also benefits us is because this is a position that will work in several towns, they'll be able to take the good ideas from other towns and what other towns are doing to be able to bring those here to Auburn.
I just, I don't know if it's more of a question, it's more of a comment. Who bases the affordable housing? Because I've talked to the elderly at Mary D. and I've talked to the elderly at Packard Chog. And affordable housing is not what I'm assuming affordable housing should be. When it costs them, a gentleman I had spoke with, his income is close to $15,000 a year. And they're talking, I'm sorry, $1,500 a month. And they're talking $1,200 for a small one-bedroom. Then they have to add on the cost of electricity. And electricity is outrageous, as we all know. I mean, we're all getting stuck with those bills. These people can't even afford that. I've seen elderly over the last two weeks, talking to them with tears in their eyes going, "Where am I going to live? The taxes are going up, there's no elderly housing. I think we need housing like Pheasant Lane Court." And to help the families, get them on their feet and then they move on. The town needs to go in the direction of that. We need more elderly housing, affordable elderly housing because 90-plus percent of them is on fixed incomes. And they can't afford some of these things.
I can answer your question. The state, the Department of Housing and Community Development sets the amounts for the rents. It's determined off of 80% of the median household income. So it's not something that the town makes up or it's not market-based, it's based on median income. And it's something the state sets. We don't have any control over the amount.
I just think it's a shame that some of the people in this town, they're going to be, end up throwing out their houses because if they can't afford the taxes to move into... I was up at Stoneville Heights, three years is a waiting list for Stoneville Heights. Three up there and also at Packard Chog. That's kind of crazy. My mother-in-law has been on the list, I think, for five or six years for Ceteri. I think that as a town, we need to really, really look at some affordable housing like Pheasant Lane Court.
That's what our hope is with this regional housing coordinator, to help us attract developers, help us, you know, increase the housing stock of all kinds. This housing is a need across the Commonwealth, across the country. That's why we're hoping that the actions we're taking, working on the Housing Production Plan, working on the Affordable Housing, the 40B developers, and this housing coordinator will help us all with these issues. We know that they're issues, we want to address them. We're doing what we can.
I've seen some duplexes for 55 and over. $600,000 per side. And their taxes on just the building, because they're listed as condo, was $15,000 per that household. So it was seven, a little over $7,000 per side. How do we do this? But we need to get this down so these people can afford this. Those amounts, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I'm trying to think of the household, for a three-bedroom was like $3,000? Am I incorrect on that? For $3,000 a month, you can go out and buy a house. We need to do something in the town. And you said the $16,000 is for the minimum. What happens if it goes to the maximum for this individual?
So for this amount, this is a regional cost. So this is split between the other towns.
How many other towns are there?
There's five towns total currently. So this is the minimal amount. And I think to your point, you're bringing up something that is important to the town, which is why we want people to take this survey. And this survey is going to help us understand what people are looking for. You are bringing up very, very valid concerns. It's important to us, too. By doing this survey, we're able to find out what's important. And taking this survey and CMRPC is able to help us with this position to be able to find options of how we can offer affordable housing. You know, even just preliminarily, we were speaking with their representative and they had a whole bunch of really nice ideas about how to, you know, have like developments where you'd have, you know, smaller type homes in an area. They had all different options that I wasn't aware of. And, you know, we thought, these are good ideas. So, you know, let's see what our needs are, let's see what the residents want and bring that to somebody that deals with us all the time.
Doreen Goodrich had a good point. A lot of these people in town can't take those surveys. They do not have computers.
That's why we have paper copies. We have paper copies available in all the town buildings.
How are these people going to get the information of this survey if they don't know about them? There's people, there's elderly people in this town that don't have cable. They have one of those little funny antennas on the side of the house and they get 13 channels. They're not getting the town channels. They don't have the internet, they don't have the computers. We're not going to be able to reach out to them to say, "Hey, we got a survey here for you."
So we have them in the town buildings to make it more accessible for people. So when people come in to pay their taxes or if they're going to the town clerk's office, which is why we knew that having, you know, a hard copy is something that's helpful.
Is there any way we can get these mailed into a tax bill? Or a SOAR bill or something? It's all going out, can we stuff an envelope with them? Just to be able to reach the people of the town?
Doreen, we're going to keep this moving along, there's a meeting at 7 o'clock. And I know there are a few other questions out here.
This is why it's important to talk about this, these warrant articles here tonight. Because we want to make sure there's accurate information about just what this is going to do. But what I would suggest, you know, as a follow-up to this, when you do this housing survey, it's very important that we either form a group or have a public meeting about housing. Because there's so much misinformation out there, whether it's, you know, the housing that falls under the Housing Authority, which is Stoneville Heights and Packard Chog and... No, not Ceteri. No, Ceteri's not federal, Ceteri falls under a private management company. It's not, and so, so this is what we need to do. We need to get information out because there's public subsidized housing and there's so-called affordable housing. The so-called affordable 40B housing, as we said, you know, they go by a median income for Auburn of $92,000 a year and then base it off of that. So I'm glad we're having this conversation because there is so much misinformation about housing, affordable housing and public housing. I think that we can do a better job at making sure the public is educated on this before we, you know, look for this. But again, I'm glad we're having this conversation because I don't want this article to fail because it's tied into public housing, that's all, or affordable housing, I'm sorry.
Let me just add that the Housing Production Plan Committee meets publicly on a monthly basis. The meetings are posted on the website, anyone is welcome to attend. And there will also be a public forum this fall as part of the Housing Production Plan. So if this topic is not going anywhere, it's a concern for all of us. And this is why having this housing coordinator will help us address all these needs, will help us meet the needs the state requires, both for the affordable housing and for the MBTA community requirements. So all this year going forward, these will all be high topics of conversation, high priority level talks. So welcome everybody to attend those meetings in that form.
So is it possible to stuff an envelope with these? We send out the trash bill, we send out the SOAR bill, we send out the... I mean, I know water is not part of it. Can we get these surveys stuffed in an envelope?
That is a good question, we've talked about that. But the billing cycles don't line up with the survey going out. So we are, the survey was released two weeks ago. I think our next scheduled billing probably would be June? And we're trying to get this complete by the end of June to meet our timeline, a schedule that was preset and predetermined based upon a number of criteria. Let me just say, there is a scheduled planning board meeting in this room at 7 o'clock. So I just want to say, we probably need to wrap things up in the next seven minutes to allow them to set up for a hybrid meeting. So Kathy?
Kathy Stone, Precinct 4. The survey is a wonderful tool. I picked one up when I was in the town hall last week, paying a bill, brought it home, started to fill it out. And you named the five towns that were mentioned. Unless you've reprinted it, this does not represent our town, it represents the town of Upton. If you read the questions, "How long will you be able to stay?" Or I don't remember the exact question. There's at least two instances when it refers to Upton and not to Auburn. So we might want to look at reprinting them or otherwise correcting them because Upton, unless I missed it, wasn't in the list of five towns even. So it's totally...
Did you see that in the survey?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out.
Ken, and then the gentleman out back, and then Todd.
Ken Frost, Precinct 4, Article 18. Are these three new vehicles?
I'm sorry, what's that question, Ken?
Article 18, there's $225,000 and some odd dollars. And I was wondering, this is, are these three new vehicles?
Yes, they are.
How come, the question is, why aren't they under the capital improvement?
They were, they, they are under the capital improvement, but because of the cost of the vehicles as a result of demand and as a result of going full complement, we committed dollars that were already in the capital plan as a down payment on, on those three vehicles.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
David Instrom, precinct four. My question is for article 25. They're talking about rehabilitating a portion of a 24-inch reinforced concrete sewer line. Are we talking multiple portions or one portion, single portion? How much is that involved? Because that number seems very low for a 24-inch main.
Thanks for your question, Nick Schwartz, sewer superintendent. So this is just for the design of the, the, of the lining of that pipe. So I want to say it was on the order of around 3,000 feet of 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe. We did our annual sewer inspection survey last year and this was identified as the highest priority section of town that needed to be addressed. So the purpose of this meeting, this article is to fund the, the design portion of it. Funding the actual construction, that, that's expected to be north of, I believe, $1.3 million. But again, we're going to have to go through the actual design to see how much of it, we're going to do all at once or what sections. And then once we get to that point, then the decision will be made as to how to fund the actual construction. All right, thank you.
And Todd, I think this will be our final question because we're talking up against 6:55.
Thank you, Todd Karan, precinct three. For, going back to article seven, what Mr. Talisman said. Assuming the town uses the surplus equity, keeps the surplus equity after the sale price minus the tax and uses that for, for town purposes. Has the town been following both the federal lawsuit that's currently in Boston challenging that as well as the legislation filed in the House that's moving through to eliminate the ability for the town to keep that surplus equity and requiring you to turn it back over to the property owner?
I do, I am aware of a language that would have to be voted by town meeting that would allow for a discount of some of the delinquent charges above and beyond the, the level of taxation. I think it's cut by 50%. But anything beyond that I am not aware of. So typically, when a house is taken through foreclosure, the redemption period is, is passed for the homeowner to recoup their asset. That being said, that's something we'd have to look into, but I'm, I'm not quite familiar with that aspect of it.
Yeah, so the federal law is actually, the court, the court case is challenging that and is actually seeking the requirement that you return the surplus equity back to the previous owner. Additionally, the legislation moving through, Representative, I think Vitolo was the main sponsor, that would actually do the same as well. So you might just want to watch that because obviously it's going to have an impact on the town.
Thank you for that information, we will take a look at that.
I just want to say that I agree with Danny, that I think the survey is important enough that it warrants another mailing. I personally believe that it's worth the extra expense to send out that mailing.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we're going to wrap it up and I want to appreciate everyone who came out tonight to ask questions. Hopefully it will help facilitate a, a, a more productive annual town meeting next Tuesday. But if you should have any questions prior to the annual town meeting, feel free to reach out to us. And if we can answer any questions in advance, that will help you make a decision on Tuesday night. We're happy to, we're happy to do that. So with that, thank you very much and we'll see you next Tuesday.